I have called the meeting to order. Councilmember Turner, would you lead us in the pledge?
I have to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And may we have the roll call, Sue.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Councilmember Brigham?
Here.
Councilmember Cruz?
Here.
Vice Mayor Walter?
I'm here.
Mayor Bagby?
Present.
And may we have the report out of closed session.
Mayor, the council considered a couple items under closed session. However, no reportable action was taken.
Conflicted interest declarations.
Yes, on the consent calendar, I will have to recuse myself from voting on item number five.
Take that vote separately unless someone pulls the item. And agenda review. Mr. City Manager.
Mayor, my recommendation tonight is because Vice Mayor Walter, I think, has to excuse himself here shortly, is if the council so agrees to change up the calendar a little bit, take up the consent calendar first prior to the proclamations and presentations. Did also want to mention that we are going to be joined this evening by Supervisor Gore. I think, I anticipate he is on his way here now. And obviously discussion on consent agenda. We'll give him a little time to get here and we'll ask him to kind of kickstart the presentation tonight with Ms. Alma Bowen.
Thank you. So at this time, we're going to take public comments. Any person wishing to speak to the city council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so. Members of the public have the right to speak on any items on the council agenda during that item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Each person wishing to speak must go to the podium when advised by the mayor and speak directly into the microphone. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes unless additional time is authorized by the mayor. Would anyone like to come forward at this time? Welcome. Please come forward and give us your name for the record. And you'll want to sign in with Sue as well.
Okay, I'm Brooke Green and I live at 202 Triplet. And Mayor Bagby, Mr. Keller, Kelly, and members of the city council. My name is Brooke Green and I'm here to request that Cloverdale join other Sonoma County cities in adopting a climate emergency resolution. Although I'm speaking as an individual, I'm joined by my friends from 187 member Cloverdale indivisible since environmental concerns are among our group's highest priorities. I'd like to thank Mr. Kelly for his awareness of this issue and for his excellent communication about progress towards including Cloverdale in a countywide climate emergency resolution. Climate emergency resolutions are an international movement, the brainchild of the climate mobilization, an organization that has worked for five years to spark an emergency response to climate change. The goal of these resolutions is to frame climate as the urgent and existential crisis it is and to spur action at all levels of government and society on a scale, scope, and speed not seen since World War II. A declaration of climate emergency is a resolution passed by a governing body such as the city council that puts the government on record in support of emergency action to reverse global warming. Cities and local governments have historically been the start for progress. Resolutions vary with many governments including local climate impacts and new climate goals in their resolution. Councils can also educate on the climate emergency, put policies in place to reduce emissions, and build community resilience against some global warming impacts. Some members of our city council and our city manager are already enthusiastically moving towards adopting a declaration of climate emergency. My hope is that the resolution will include creation of an action committee to set goals and establish a system of accountability. Please let us know what community members can do to help you reach this goal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And would anyone else like to come forward and address the council? Please state your name and fill out the form that Sue's going to give you.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Elsa Halbach and I'm a resident of Cloverdale, which is a community with quite a few dog lovers. I'm here this evening to request a proposal to build a dog park or parks in Cloverdale for our dogs and ourselves. Vice Mayor Gus Walter and I have visited two of the city parks and have measured certain areas of the parks for potential dog parks. They are the Second Street City Park and Vintage Park. The addition of a dog park to an existing city park could be an easy and cost-effective project because, number one, the area, the areas are already maintained by the city. Number two, there are already parking areas for, at the parks. And number three, most of the parks already have shade and water available. This in no way means that we would not pursue a larger area for a dog park in the future for Cloverdale and for our small and large dogs with all the amenities that most dog parks have. I would also like to ask if we could create a special meeting so we could discuss the areas in Cloverdale where we could have potential, a potential larger dog park. But in the interim, I think these smaller additions to a dog park would really be a good thing for the community, a nice thing for the community to do, okay? I appreciate the opportunity to present this dog park quest and thank you so much.
Would anyone else like to come forward at this time and address the council on an item not on the agenda? Don't worry, Tony, I didn't start your timer yet.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Bagby, distinguished members of Cloverdale City Council. My name's Tony Giraldi. I'm here as a appointee from Supervisor James Gore's office to the Board of Directors at Sonoma County Fair. I'm here to extend an invitation to our 82nd Annual Sonoma County Fair, which takes place August 1st through August 2nd, or I'm sorry, August 1st through August 11th. Excuse me, would that be a short fair? Wouldn't it? And we have got a great fair planned this year. It's going to be a special one. The theme this year is Back to Our Roots in Cowboy Boots, which kind of harks back to when you think about pretty much everyone here in Sonoma County, no matter their background, at one time they were wearing cowboy boots. So it's a country western theme and it's going to be a lot of fun. The Hall of Flowers will follow that. Every garden display will have a, will feature a specific song along with highlighting a flower. And I was, took a tour of the Hall of Flowers just yesterday and it's coming along great. It's going to be one of our best Hall of Flowers in many years. And along with some of the favorites that you can expect at the fair, we've got the, a special cattle drive, which will take place on Sunday, August 4th, from downtown San Rosa to the fairgrounds at 10:00 a.m. And this is, we did it back eight years ago for our 75th Annual Fair and we're doing it again this year. And if you're interested in being part of the cattle drive, let me know. We can get you a horse, we can get you in the cattle drive. It'll be a lot of fun. So lots of nightly entertainment. We've got a, we've got great bands, great music every night, including Lone Star and the Average White Band, every night, great entertainment. Returning favorites, I mentioned that. The NorCal Brew Fest, this is our third year, first Saturday, August 3rd. We've got the Junior Livestock Auction, 4H and FFA Kids proudly displaying their animals for sale. We've got great food, food that you can only find at a fair. Lobster corn dogs, those Krispy Kreme cheeseburgers. The carnival rides will be waiting for us. We've got the rodeo, demolition derby, three, not one, two, but three nights of demolition, monster truck show, and eight days of racing, which included with racing, Race Four on August 2nd, Friday, August 2nd, will be the Cloverdale Race. And that is, August 2nd is Cloverdale Fair, Cloverdale Day at the Fair. So I invite you specifically for that day, please try to make it. We'll have you in the winner's circle again, Race Four, Friday, August 2nd. Come, enjoy lunch, enjoy the fair. Hope to see you there. I know what the city staff has been, provided materials that will help you more enjoy the fair and create enjoyment out of it, I should say. And we look forward to having you at the fair. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I?
Certainly.
You're going to have to help me out here. What am I looking at when I'm thinking of a cattle drive from downtown San Rosa to the fairgrounds?
Yeah, from Courthouse Square, we've got approximately 30 head of cattle that will be going down Fourth Street, Brookwood Drive into the fair. And it's kind of reminiscent of the old days with cattle drives. And we'll have some covered wagons.
No way.
And absolutely, it's going to be huge.
That sounds fun, man.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Tony? All right, great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else from the public like to come forward and address the council? Or turn off their phones? It's no one I know, don't worry. Okay, well, seeing none, we are going to move on to, actually, we rearranged our schedule a bit, we're going to move on to the consent calendar. All items under consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the council unless any council member or member of the public requests that they can, the item can be removed and considered separately. Yes, certainly.
Item 11.
Item 11.
Can we talk about that or should we pull it?
If you want to discuss it further, we can just go ahead and pull the item, okay? Sue, you got that? Okay. Any, anyone else from the council who wants to pull a consent item?
Madam Mayor, if I could pull item number eight, please.
And pull, eight, if I can find it. Certainly.
And of course I can, item five.
And five, you know, let's, we'll just go ahead and we'll do three separate. How about that? Would anyone from the public like to pull an item from the consent calendar? This is your opportunity. All right, well, seeing none, then we'll bring it back to the council.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to offer the consent calendar by title only with the exception of item number eight and item number 11.
Why don't we, do you like to add number five? And five?
And five.
And is there a second?
I will second.
Okay. Do we need a roll call for that or can we take a voice vote for that?
Roll call, please.
Roll call vote, Sue, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Bagby?
Aye.
Okay, why don't we just go ahead and take item five separately then? We'll just, do you want to exit or just not?
I don't have to.
Okay, all right.
I just can't vote on it.
Just can't vote on it?
It's under consent, so.
Right, it's under consent, okay.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to offer item number five for approval.
Is there a second?
I will second.
May we have a roll call, Sue?
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Brigham?
Recused.
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Yes.
Mayor Bagby?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to item eight. So is there some question or discussion about item eight?
Yeah, I'd just like to have a brief discussion on this, Madam Mayor, if I may. Thank you for the opportunity. It's not my intention to argue the MOU this evening, but I would like to communicate that with the potential of a new police chief joining our staff this evening, that I would like to put out there to ensure to realize this is a living document that may require changes as the time moves forward. The intention of this document, I think, is to give us some ability to control costs over unforeseen investigations that may occur within our city limits. And while I don't presently have any gross disagreements with that, I would like to make sure we keep a pulse on it. And so with that, as long as there's no other comment, maybe from the, oh, I'm not allowed to do that. So that's all from my opening statement, thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions or comments from the council on this? Do you want to discuss what we?
Thank you. Well, Madam Mayor, I'd like to know, is there, is there a deadline when this has to be submitted?
Vice Mayor, I'd like to, I think the council is, desires to discuss this further. Maybe a little bit of beef, brief background and overview of how this was brought forward tonight by interim Chief Stewart. Chief, if you may.
Be happy to. So this came about during an investigation. It was a, started out to be a kidnapping investigation in the city of Cloverdale proper. We quickly, I wasn't here at the time, but the acting police chief at that time met with the city manager and described the amount of work that had to go into it, investigative services, and our inability really to address that issue in a proper way. So we contacted the Sheriff's Department and in the past, the Sheriff's Department's been very good about assisting the smaller agencies with the major investigations like this. What was a surprise was that the Sheriff's Department has a new policy that they will now be charging the municipal police departments for their services, which we weren't aware of. It's something that's, I think, came about in the last year or so. So there were some negotiations that went on, an agreement that we would follow through with some type of pay structure to have the Sheriff's Department fulfill that obligation of doing the investigation. During this process, unfortunately, the investigation revealed that it was actually going to be a homicide. The body was recovered in the county of Sonoma, unincorporated area. But what came after that was a large invoice to the city of Cloverdale for the services. Negotiation took place, I'm sure you're aware of that, trying to get the amount down. This MOU that was drafted by the Sheriff's Department and submitted to all the small, all the small agencies allows for us to utilize their services, have a contract in place. We put a $20,000 cap on the contract or on the MOU process. It's in our budget this year. So we would be monitoring that. It's not like we have to give them the $20,000. If we utilize their services, we will monitor that amount and make sure that we don't go over that without having further approval.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
Just one last comment. I feel remiss that I failed to give you the credit that was deserved for the work that you put into this and the expertise, especially coming from another small jurisdiction such as Cattotti, which is why I do have faith in this document at its ground level. I just want to make sure that we keep a pulse on it, is my opinion and my request at this time. And I wanted the opportunity for this item to be spoken about individually, so I genuinely appreciate the background and the hard work that you've put in so far. Thank you.
One of the other items that is associated with this is the small agencies that police chiefs did meet on several occasions. We agreed to provide services to each other, which is a real benefit if we need extra bodies for interviewing people or some expertise in a certain area that they may have, then we just make a call to the agencies and they roll with her people. So that would avoid having to pay the Sheriff's Department for certain services. But there are, in reality, things that small agencies can't do and that large agencies can. So I'm not saying it'll never happen, but we're prepared if we have an agreement in place.
Great, thank you. Questions?
No, I just want to make sure that the public is informed about this and I think it's very important that we do have an MOU in place because something could happen tomorrow and we wouldn't be protected. So this is a very important piece to keep. And of course, as Councilmember Turner mentioned, something that will continue to be revised as we have a new chief.
So at this time, even though this is a consent item, would anyone from the public like to come forward and state a professional opinion about this, about this item? Okay, professional or otherwise, all right? All right, seeing none, I will bring it back to the council. Any further deliberations or comments? Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve memorandum of understanding for law enforcement-related investigative services with the Sonoma County Sheriff's Department.
Second.
Maybe have a roll call, please. Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Bagby?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to item 11, participation in Sonoma County's Transit Fair Free program. And I believe it was Councilmember Cruz who had a question or concern.
Mr. Kelly, would you, would you please give a little background on the program to the public to make sure everybody's on?
Absolutely, thank you, Councilmember Cruz.
Well, we did have, we just, let's keep it brief because we have a full schedule tonight. We did have a full presentation on this recently. And so, but yeah, just summarize it and then let's, let's move on.
Sure, absolutely. Council has had a presentation overview of what's referred to as a fare-free program that'd be offered by Sonoma County Transit. A number of areas in Sonoma County have been, have agreed to participate in the program and now Cloverdale is being asked to participate. What's before you is an agreement that would implement the fare-free program on our local Route 68 starting as soon as July 29th. I think the, the MOU, or excuse me, the agreement in your, in your packet did reference starting July 1st. But obviously, we're just now bringing this forward, so the anticipation would be, if you approve, we would start, or Sonoma County Transit would initiate the program starting July 29th. I think I can, if I understand, Councilmember Cruz's concerns is that there was some input about the desire to change the routing associated with their, their service within Sonoma County. And I think there's still the opportunity to do that, even if the council decides to move forward with adoption of the fare-free program tonight. There is a draft schedule that was included in your packet. Obviously, we could work very quickly with Mr. Alby, with the Sonoma County Transit on trying to make any kind of necessary modifications. But it gets very complicated very quickly with respect to changing and modifying any of the stops and what the impact is on the overall routing for our local route, because you change one thing, it changes the times of those stops. And there's also some consideration relative to where those stops are located and making sure that the, we have the appropriate accessibility and that you get the, the same kind of ridership that you would expect by changing those locations. So what council may want to do, if you're in support of the fare-free program, is move forward with adopting the resolution this evening, but providing directions to staff to work with Councilmember Cruz and the appropriate subcommittee on looking at the routing of the program, or the routing of Route 68 and including any potential modifications to the transit stops along that route. That would be, again, the, I think the intent would be to address the potential increase in ridership, particularly with respect to the school age community. There was an additional time added to the route to try to facilitate the school age children being able to utilize the bus. And so that's kind of, you know, there might get some new ridership patterns that we might want to look at and evaluate, and also how that the students might, you know, take the bus and actually access and go, you know, the walking routes from, from, from the bus stop to the school and how that might work. So that tends to take a little bit more time and evaluation, but I don't know if I've answered your question, Councilmember Cruz, if that's?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the public understands what the premise of this is. I do definitely want for us to vote on, on the free fare program. However, I would like it with the condition that it would be reevaluated in terms of timing and routes that would eventually be modified to, to meet the needs of the new ridership profile.
Any other questions? Yeah, and then I'm going to open it up to the public as soon as we have any questions.
I just wanted to state that I did find them very receptive to opening a stop in town. It took us a while to get it done, but it was mostly for the elderly people from the Kings Valley. And so it's very possible to pass this and then to get them to work on the routing.
Yes.
It does work, they do listen, most of the time.
Jason, did you have any questions?
Thank you, no, I'm okay.
All right, at this time, I'm going to open this up to the public if anyone would like to come forward and address this issue. All right, seeing no one, I'll bring it back to the council. Would someone like to make a motion?
Yes, I move that we accept resolution number 55219 of the city of Cloverdale adopting the city of Cloverdale current salaries, I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong.
Oops.
That's not page, it says here, page 214.
208.
208, yes. Gee. Let's see, 208. This happens. Resolution 54, 2019 of the city of Cloverdale, approving a letter of agreement for participation in Sonoma County Transit Fair Free Program for Cloverdale Local Route 68. The Cloverdale Shuttle for the period of would be July 29th to June 30, 2020.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Give a roll call, please.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Bagby?
Aye.
And I think we probably see if there's consensus for sending this topic to the Planning and Community Development Subcommittee regarding the routes and stops. Would that be acceptable? Is that acceptable to everyone?
Mayor, that's certainly fine, or the, or the Public Works Subcommittee.
Or Public Works?
If I may, Marta is the co-chair on the community develop, am I remembering that correctly, Marta?
Yes.
So I would like to have it put in there if it's appropriate.
Okay, great, we've got your direction, all right. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, if I may, excuse me, we may go to the meeting.
You are, and our best wishes go with you.
Thank you.
Be a good patient. Are we live? Are we working? Is it working? Okay.
You did good, Kevin.
All right, all right. That's an accomplishment. Next up are proclamations and presentations, a presentation about emergency preparedness. I believe we have Supervisor Gore in the house to give us an introduction.
Mayor, council, if I, if I may, the presentation tonight by Ms. Bowen was recommended by our fourth district supervisor, Supervisor Gore, partly in, because of his involvement in addressing resiliency through, through disaster. And Supervisor Gore approached me this afternoon about kind of giving a brief introduction of his work on resiliency related to disaster preparedness and to give kind of a proper introduction to Ms. Bowen. Did want to share for the record, obviously, we know Supervisor Gore is our supervisor for the fourth district, but he's also the chair of the National Association of Counties' Resilient Counties Advisory Board. He's also the chair of the California State Association of Counties' Resilient Counties Initiative. And last but not least, he's a board member of Resilient America Roundtable. And I think it's all going to tie in very carefully, very closely with the proposal that we're going to hear tonight from Ms. Alma Bowen with Nuestar Komandad, who is going to outline-
to hear tonight from Ms. Alma Bowen with Nuestra Comandad, who is going to outline a proposed work plan to assist the city conduct community outreach to facilitate emergency preparedness. So I guess with that said, I'll turn that over to Supervisor Gore.
Thank you guys very much. It's good to be here. Gus had to leave, I guess I need to wash before I come next time. Having just had knee surgery, I understand. I actually just came over happily, so my mom and my stepdad just moved back to Cloverdale. You know, I think many of you know I grew up here and my mom, so it's some 35 years later and she lives in Clover Springs, or as when she arrived, her neighbor came up to her and called it death's doorstep. Welcome to death's doorstep. I was like, well, that's kind of odd.
Oh, man.
Hilarious. So anyways, it's, I, you know, have good relationships with all of you, some of you I haven't seen in a while. I remain open and also humble to anything that I haven't followed upon with you, because like many of you, I get tunnel vision sometimes and get pulled into potholes and permits instead of trying to do all of the transformational stuff that we want to do in our community. But being before you, it makes me also want to offer that if there's a time in the next month, two months, that I can come before you and we can have a larger discussion, not about disaster preparedness, but find a way to Brown Act it so that it's not just like I'm meeting with the mayor and vice mayor, or I'm meeting with another council member, I'm meeting with another council member, where we can talk about some of the ideas and the needs around SMART and pulling together a regional hub in North County to really advocate for how we want that to look, for the Russian River and the cleanup and what money we've put in or what we might need to with Clean River Alliance and other groups, with the homelessness and the task force. I mean, there's so many issues. So just one quick thing I wanted to mention to folks is that I checked in recently, we have the money in hand for the First Street Bridge. I look at Mary Ann Burg...
Are you sure?
We have the money, but it's just one of those things that it took them two years to get us the money, and now we're doing the environmental. So I'd love to reach out to folks and figure out how to design that with the town's input. You know, it's one of those things, once we got the money, we're like, hooray, we got it from a regional hub, from SCTA. And then we realized afterwards that we were going to get the money in 2019 and have to do two years of planning, and it wasn't going to be until 2021 that we could provide an access for these kids who walk across every day. So I'll provide some updates on that, but I'd really love to figure out a time to come back and have like a strategic dialogue. One thing that our board's been trying to do recently to not get outside of the Brown Act, but to honor things, is like, we could even, we could notice a meeting at any time. It doesn't have to be during your regular, if you, I don't want to impact your agendas, but we could have a meeting at the County Board of Supervisors and I could host you guys in and we could have a dialogue and people could come. So anyways, that's an offer. What I do want to jump into is just this a little bit real quickly, is as we key in, I don't know if this is going to be able to run now. No, doesn't look like it. But so what you have before you, if you could see it, is a, it shows a fire progression map of the Tubbs Fire, and what it shows is how fast and how furious that fire came. And as you guys know, I'm not going to go through too much of the details of Coffee Park and others, but like many of you, I think the context for this discussion is really pronounced because if, I'll send you a link to this map, but the fire progression map really shows the first 36 hours of the Tubbs Fire. And the problem is, is that a lot of people who don't live in these areas where you've had these kinds of fires, don't realize that certain fires are really natural disasters. They are tornado, wind disasters. It doesn't matter how many firefighters you have, how many airdrops you have, you can't fight that. So people think, I have a firefighter, ah, we should be able to fight a fire. These are full evacuation routes. This is the equivalent of a tornado for California. I think that's the best way to think of it. It's a full notice of a tornado. And the big thing that we need to get out to everybody is the understanding that our red flag warnings should be considered tornado warnings, in a certain essence. You don't do things to exacerbate the problem, you make sure you're ready to go. You've seen the damage. One of the things that I'm a part of nationwide and throughout the state of California is really rallying communities around this, whether it's natural or man-made disasters. I think the craziest thing to recognize is outside of the big ones that we all know about, a third of the counties in the entire United States in the past three years have had federal disaster declarations. This is why I signed the climate disaster proclamation that Mayor Bagby has been talking about, is because, once you get to a point where you're, when I've been a county supervisor and you all know in Sonoma County, we've had, in the last four years since I've been elected, the largest year of rainfall on record since 1865, the driest year on record since 1865. We've also had two of the biggest floods in the last 75 years. And then we've had a catastrophic wildfire and the end of a drought. So I mean, all those things together makes you realize that there's a lot of stuff going on and it's climate related. So this is a part of a movement, and this movement, what it means is that we've lobbied successfully for more money to come into an area that I want to invite you all into a discussion on, which is FEMA is definitely moving to the route of pre-disaster mitigation. They don't want to spend as much money, supplemental $250 billion a year on all these disasters. What they want to do is put up 500 million to a billion a year that we can apply for in the things that make us resilient, that mitigate or remove hazards before they arrive. That's the trend line, it'll take a while to get there, but the funding is moving there. Sonoma County currently has $48 million in grant requests to FEMA post our disaster. Ironically, after you go through a major disaster, you become, you get more of that money to mitigate the next disaster. The reasoning is, is that they don't want the same place to be hit again, right? But it's also ironic that you say, I have to go through hell to be able to qualify for funding. We anticipate about 36 million of that coming in, everything from home hardening, seismic retrofits on different programs, and things are moving forward. I always tell people that the biggest thing, the biggest message that we can have with resilience and preparedness, as our dear friend and colleague and professional Alma Bowen's going to come up and say is, wake up yourself, wake up others, and stay woke. I'm going to get real quickly into a slide, that's our top 10 list. One of the things for us in Sonoma County, as you all know, is post the Tubbs Fire, where we had 23 individuals pass away in the Tubbs Fire itself, was the focus of you did not do everything you could do. You did not send out a notification of evacuation. And everyone was evacuating, but you did not use the Wireless Emergency Alert System. I did not know what the Wireless Emergency Alert System was prior to that event. So all of us, many of us as board members, were under a situation where our previous county manager, and this isn't a blame game, we were one of six counties in California that had approval to be able to utilize this. But at the same time, the perception and the reality are mixed in this gray area, which is, 75 of the towers burnt down that night or became disconnected. If this was available, what would it have done? The emergency managers had made a call previously that they didn't want to increase hysteria, right? So they didn't want to have more people like in paradise dying on roads. If they need to shelter in place, what do they do? There was a huge amount of criticism at the county. I felt, and I think my colleagues all did too, after we had an independent analysis done by the state, is that you can never, the issue is not do you alert people, it's how do you alert them? Had you traveled far enough upstream to identify what you need to do? Had you run through a scenario for how you do bilingual? Had you run through a scenario on how to get people not just to call 911, but another system like 211, which is a public information system so that you don't overload an emergency line that is, should be required for saving people as opposed to overloading it with calls of should I evacuate, informational calls? So basically, what you, if I'm going into the detail of the MOU that we've created with the variety of different public and private partners that operate, not just the WIA system, the Wireless Emergency Alert System, but also NICSIL systems, as you guys know very well, it has much better, much improved. We do have a capacity to utilize it better, because we've tested it and seen how it works and how it also bleeds over into areas like, you try and notify Sonoma Valley and all of, or or Park lights up. But at the same time, we have to realize that you, if hell's coming, you have to let people know what's going on. You cannot be silent. And so that was a big frustration. So I'm going to go through, I'm not going to give you a bunch of these. Part of my mission is to make sure that the Office of Emergency Services does not operate in a bunker anymore. You know, the reality is, is that for you all as cities, we're looking at retrofitting something called the Emergency Council, so that it would be a JPA, a Joint Powers Authority with all the cities, not just this hub, which is like the Emergency Management Division within the county, and they all bunker into the Emergency Operations Center. And then all of us in the community are saying, get information, how do we tell people what's going on? People need to know what's happening. How do we really get beyond that and have this be threaded into our world? This is one of the reasons that you saw me get so active on social media and Facebook and, because I had access to talk to firefighters, to see where it was, to provide situational awareness, and I was having a problem for my own entity in getting information out. And the problem was, is that by the time the information was ready, ready is what I mean, reviewed by seven people, passed through 17 different paradigms, it was stale and it was almost too clean, right? And there was even information, so much liability, like confidential and privileged. I'd be like, people need this information. Stop putting confidential and privileged above every damn email, right? I need to put this on Facebook, I'm going to, right? So there's this big thing about community awareness, and the good thing about today is we're talking about it in a preparedness rather than learning from fault. We all know about the town halls and the city halls that we did. One of the things I learned was really the lack of the system to be able to interact with the Latino community, the American Indian community, the Sikh community and others. And so let's just talk about anybody who isn't male pale and stale, as they like to say. You know, just kind of your general setup of assuming that everybody receives information in the same way over and again. It was a huge learning experience for me to get out there and work with our tribes and Kishaya Tribe at their offices to host all of the people from Cloverdale Rancheria and others, and work with them on trying to do this right. The second message outside of communicate with everybody is organizing and mobilizing. This is another video, once again, I'll make this presentation available to you, but this is our block captains. We organized our people into block captains for rebuild. What we're going to be talking about in a few minutes tonight is organizing people into preparation-based councils, right? So in the aftermath of really the fires, what I realized was, we were going back to Community Organizing 101 for these block captains. And it was true power because they would self-elect and then we'd meet together. And I took the old precinct maps from, you guys all know, knocking on doors. I went through these areas where I knocked on doors relentlessly and it was a very quiet neighborhood, and now it was super active. They wanted laws changed to help them rebuild, they wanted to figure out what's going on, they wanted awareness, they wanted to know how to battle FEMA or their insurance companies. And so, I'm not going to belabor at this point, but my big thing is that outside of that work, what we really did is we pushed into creating COPE teams, citizens organized to prepare for emergencies. Many of you have also heard of CERT, Citizen Emergency Response Teams. That is, think of COPE as CERT light, right? It's like map your neighborhood. So we have Palomino Lakes is one area that's come into the fold. Geyserville, Fitch Mountain and Mill Creek are really ahead of the game on mapping their neighborhoods, knowing where there's elderly family members, knowing where there's water tanks, where there's shelter and space areas. Palomino Lakes and others are trying to catch up. So we've created a forum that we bring them together and we invite people from Cherry Creek and Felta to try and create their own network. We've done that primarily through, started with, you might know him, a Chief of Fire from Geyserville named Marshall Turberville. I was able to get a $60,000 grant for them to do the organizing, and then they do the work. It's not me, because they don't trust me, and they shouldn't, on emergency services. I need to get you guys in front of people, right? With the resources you need. So very successful and it creates an insatiable appetite for you to do more. But I like it because I want to be lobbied on this stuff. I want to be pushed by the people on Mill Creek to say, I need you to find money so we can put up signs for this alternate evacuation route we drove, right? And then I go try and get signs, and then my county council says, you can't print signs because that would be a liability if someone were to die on your evacuation route. And then I realize that liability is the death of progress. So anyways, you learn these things, and then so you start to advocate at the state level for a Good Samaritan law, blah, 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 you guys know. We have, out of our recovering resiliency framework, we have 10 priority areas. The ones I want to focus on is the alert and warning is a primary role that we have and we need to own it. It's much better, but we're going to need to keep testing it. We're going to need to keep going through. There's a place for all of you in the discussions with the renewal of the Emergency Council and any of this work, should you desire it. Identifying hazards, risk, mitigation strategies and evacuation routes. With respect to evacuation routes, we have our Director of Emergency Services identifying about 18 communities around the United, around the county where we're going to do high-low siren testing and actually have people do mock evacuations. And that's going to start in about six weeks. We haven't released the names of the communities yet. I would anticipate that I'll be able to loop in Palomino Lakes in a way for that, to try it out. And as you guys know, I deal with all kinds of drama on the bridge out there, too. I'm going to jump down to number four, which is hardening of infrastructure and above hardening techniques on wildfire. Some of you know we have a PACE program, Property Assess Clean Energy Program through the Sonoma County Energy Independence Program. This last week, we reviewed, we're going to try and put together a package that we'll offer to homeowners. From a government side, let's say, we have $30 million in cap space in a bond that we have out that is not occupied by current clean energy projects, that we're going to try and incentivize so that people can do home hardening through that. The legislature opened up home hardening for wildfire and also bracketing for earthquakes. So this would be a way that people could get like a no interest loan paid back on your property taxes as opposed to going out to a bank to be able to do upgrades on your home. The goal is to also get people that can get reductions in insurance premiums as a part of that, to create a partnership that can facilitate that. The number five is vegetation management. I've been very loud and extremely successful and extremely criticized for item number five recently. I intentionally used the words in my board meeting that I was pissed to get into the paper and create a stir. And the paper wrote about...
Yeah, mission accomplished.
Well, they wrote three articles about it and quoted it, and then I got 15 others, and all of a sudden, people started writing me notes who were pissed or who woke up or who hadn't woken up, and then they slapped me on the back of the hand with an editorial. And I talked to them the other day and I said, that's fine. If you don't agree, if you don't like me to do it, just please don't compare me to Trump again, because I don't like him. So about like insults and things, but you know, that's their prerogative. My point is, is that the issue is, is people are asleep. That's the issue. We're sitting here and everyone's pointing back at each other who are awake. Let's go back to that point. Wake up, stay woke, wake up others. All these people were having this conversation, what do we need to do? What if the county ride away, 1,700 miles? You've got to go from two to five, five feet, vegetation removal. What are you doing as a city? The reality is, is Sonoma County, unlike all the counties to the north of us that have a lot of public land, is 95% privately owned, okay? Which means, if you do not do work on your property, everybody's in this situation. So the one thing I want to mention down below is number seven, community awareness strategies. This goes right into Alma's presentation. Number nine, the 211 system. For those who don't know, 211 is the public information side of 911. It was created decades ago as an alternative to be able to take vital community intersection and resources off of the 911 system to allow it the ability to be a first response network. Sonoma County, in my assessment, hasn't, did not learn the lessons from San Diego and others that had gone through fires and had learned that they needed to create a redundancy, a different system, so that when you send out a wireless emergency alert, you can say, dial 211 for more information. 211 can be staffed by Health and Human Services folks, there's just-in-time training, there's nonprofits you can bring into it. So we are trying to make this a robust system so that it clears up space. You can't just send a note to 100,000 people and say, the wave of fire is here, run for your lives. You have to say, don't call 911, call 211. And instead of like I was, sitting up there and every time I'd be given notes for a press conference, it would say, for animals, dial 565-7542. For looking for a family member, dial 565-7592. For, you know, you can't do that. You've got to give people a switchboard. We have, through our recovery and resilience of plan, ever, you know, identified a scoping of all kinds of actions and we're tracking them quarterly on what we get and how we get it done. I just put a couple slides up here in our floods this last year. Lot of improvements, great information, bilingual. We tested our systems. The test actually went out and it showed what we thought, which is a lot of problems. So it shows that a lot of people have full... So it shows that a lot of people have full faith in technology and in an app to save them. But then it doesn't work for a variety of reasons. Even so much as the fact, like with this test, and you see the heat map there in the middle, we had to be a live feed test so that we had 70 validators out in the field who were doing detailed analysis of when they received it so they could test it. We also had other individuals be able to, anybody from the community be able to go on and do a survey. AT&amp;T and Verizon were very different in their application. There's things like that with interoperability. So that being said, I'm going to, I apologize for giving you maybe more than you need, but Alma Bowen was 17 years in, as a dispatcher, a 9-1-1 dispatcher in REDCOM. REDCOM is our joint powers authority that we all participate in to have, for a 9-1-1 system that's not for police and fire, right? And she and I connected, and her husband Darnell, after the fires. And she had really had a mission to take her expertise and not just hold it within 9-1-1, but get it out into the community. I found her to be, I'm vouching for her here because she's impressed me. Not because we're friends or anything like that. I've just been so impressed by what they presented as a plan. She has a contract or the organization, Nuestra Comunidad, which is fully bilingual, has a contract currently with United Way of the Wine Country to deploy out the new 2-1-1 system. Alma and I, I just kind of said, hey, I'd love to do something in the communities in my district. I don't have a lot of, you know, discretionary dollars. We had about $50,000 of TOT. Maybe we can do something with Cloverdale. It's a good-sized area. I've had a lot of interest. You could go do meetings with churches. You could go do meetings with schools. You could go, you could help us really get the word out there in a bilingual manner. And maybe I can put some money on the table and maybe they will as well, right? So I kind of said, hey, what if I put 5,000 and we saw a potential match? Or give us a scope of what would be bigger and maybe we'll try and run for the money. But establish the need and then I, you know, I can help rally money, too. So I think she's going to present, I know she's going to present a pilot and her expertise. And I'm going to shut up and let her dive in unless there's any questions. Thank you.
We were talking about any kind of disaster. And the slip-out over on Geyser's Road. I've been talking to, and those guys are under your jurisdiction, not mine. And one woman I'm particularly thinking about, she's retired. Her well got destroyed when it slipped out. And she's living on a fixed income and it's going to be twenty, maybe $20,000. $15,000 to $20,000. Is there a, she asked me again, I'm sure she butches at me more than she butches bitches at you. But isn't there any kind of a pocket of money for people like her who have very limited income, own their home outright, but they do not want to move and be faced with a $20,000 bill from a natural disaster once it's been declared a natural disaster? I thought there was some kind of funding pockets for them, people like her.
You know, unfortunately, the complexity of our world, as you and I have talked about, is you spend more money on an EIR study for a sidewalk than the sidewalk itself sometimes. Is that's a situation where there's kind of two things related to that slide. One is, first of all, is we were waiting for the money from the Federal Highway Administration and then it slid again a second time. And so we were working with one landowner right there who is right above it and trying to secure the site itself. And then you guys all know about how horrible that road is. You could just about duke's a hazard that thing in a Prius and fly off into the stratosphere. But on the other side, the constituent you're talking about, who I was with today.
Oh, thank you. Good.
I was, and we've been, we've been going through a lot of analysis on this. And fortunately, this is classic. We probably spent $30,000 in staff time trying to figure out how to pay, how to help somebody who has a $10,000 or $20,000 problem.
Yeah.
We can fix the land, but it's a gift of public funds if we pay somebody back for a harm caused in that way. That's the determination of our county council, right? And so they're like, hell, no. And then you go back and you talk to her and she says, you know, rightfully so, is my insurance has given me hell. And then the assessment of your county council is, is like, this should be homeowner's insurance. Just like you, Gore, a tree fell onto your property, your homeowner's insurance covers it. If the land moves next to her property and affects her system, that should be homeowner's insurance. And then you get into this world where you're in a hell trapped between government and insurance.
Right.
I mean, shoot, I even talked to her about suing the county, you know? It's a good way for me to review something.
Actually, I brought that up.
Yeah, I told her, why don't you do that?
She doesn't have the money for an attorney.
You know, pay Jimmy D or anybody like that for any money. So I'm, I'm still, we're still working on it and trying to figure it out. The difficulty is, is that once you do the work of repairing some, like an area, if the well is destroyed, that's connected to it, which was a part of her home, like councils are telling me, you can't do it, number one, and number two, it should be our insurance. And then she goes to her insurance and she's like, they're screwed. And I'm like, well, okay, I'm going to host a fundraiser. You know, or maybe use my, maybe I can pair with campaign funds since someone ran against me.
Oh, go ahead. Trump did it.
Put a big, okay. I appreciate that, though, because it's right. You know, you're, it's frustrating to be in the death of common sense.
Because I get a lot of phone calls like that from county people.
Yeah, I agree.
Any other questions for the supervisor?
I think it was bullet point number four, when you talked about the evacuations of certain communities and working on practices for that. I'd like to see if you guys, and maybe it's part of the following presentation and to just defer me to that is fine. What's your guys' point of view right now on unannounced drills for even jurisdictions such as Cloverdale, where we may not know what we don't know until we're slapped in the face with it? And I pull a little bit of this experience from the private sector and where recently our organization was told that in a fictitious drill, unannounced, that gas main had broken and we were on divert. And I'd be interested to know, in an unannounced drill setting, even, not to cause hysteria. I know there's a fine line. I would, we would have a lot more dialogue over how to do it, but I just wanted to see if you guys had a pulse on some level of unannounced drills for jurisdictions to have an opportunity to be woken.
Yep. The, well, two things. One is within a city jurisdiction, I'll give you an example, is Hillsburg recently. They put out about an eight-page mailer to everybody in the city limits that has access to information, resources, all these other things, and evacuation routes on a map. Some people love it. Other people are like, the evacuation routes on a map are like on Fitch Mountain, just saying, go that way, you know? I mean, so how much is really education about evacuation routes? Go to 101, right? So there's this part of it where you, where as us as, you know, county and municipal governments, it's like, how do you not just do the cover-your-arse scenario? So you do something that says, hey, not our fault. We presented information on evacuation routes. How do you make it be real? What I would actually propose, since this is an issue within the city itself and so it's not just outside, is, I think we should start with maybe doing a text alert test in an area like this. If you guys wanted to be a pilot for this year's series, I've been pushing to be another series of tests. So we targeted last time with the Wireless Emergency Alert System, the WEA system, the Electronic Broadcasting System and also Reverse 9-1-1. We targeted, selected by emergency services, about five communities that had different things. One that was primary Latino, Roseland. One that was, would deal with floods, Guernville. One that was high tourism and other things, Hillsburg. Follow me. One in Pengrove, which is close to a train. So what's the scenario if there's a spill, right? And what I would offer up is that if you guys want to look at, especially if we consider a partnership, we could probably do this within the context of a campaign and an outreach campaign. And I would just say, the unannounced, I don't know yet. I would, I would start with the announced, like the WEA. You know, we're going to test the system in Cloverdale, bilingually, right? And do some outreach and other things beforehand and provide an ability for people to fill out surveys and give us information. I think that's a good possibility.
And I guess where I'm coming from, and maybe, I think what I'm hearing is this is more of an internal conversation that we could have as we progress. But I'd like to see how city staff reacts to deploying their command center or deploying their EOD in a fictitious setting where they might play through scenarios on who do we need to communicate? Who do we need to make sure we have open lines of communication with? And then we start to write that script that we can build from. But again, what I'm really hearing here is start internal, get a process going and get into the partnership.
Like, I don't want you guys to have to go sign a contract with an external firm for $50,000 to try and run this stuff. If we have the capacity in-house, which we have increased the staffing, the needed staffing in emergency services, let's figure out what is, what are the things that you want so that I can bring in the expertise and potentially do that. If you want to do it on your own, cool, you know? But the other part of what you're talking, it's funny because when you say, I just want to see how staff responds, I think of you like running around City Hall like slapping behind people's back and seeing how high they jump. But you make a very good point because, like, for example, I got a call from one of your friends in town, Jim DiMartini, who wanted me to have our emergency services folks go meet with the Citrus Fair Board to talk to them, to go through and help them present a plan on how they will run successfully as a shelter, right? And so they're not just like, shelter's up! And you guys are running around trying to get information from the EOC and others. But whether it's our staff or whether it's the Red Cross, it's having them come in and do capacity building, look at a plan and have them help it out. So I think what you're saying is a perfect thing for the next presentation because starting with community preparedness and just trying to do something to get word out, then you can start to attach, you know, whatever you want to do. And that's what we've done because we have a resiliency framework that allows, I almost think about it as an omnibus bill, like in Congress, that I can attach different things to, right?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
James, you're going to stick around, right?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So I'll take questions from the public at the end. Why don't we have Alma come forward after that quick five-minute introduction?
And thank you, Tony Geraldi, for being here. I didn't know Tony Geraldi was going to be here. I was going to say, I can't wait. I'm so excited to see the average white band. Is that what you said their name was? I'd rather go to the awesome Latino band than that.
I think he took up my time.
Alma, you have the pointer there, you can use that.
My name is Alma Bowen. I'm the executive director and founder of Nuestra Comunidad or NC. We like to be inclusive, so I give people the option of just NC as well. But tonight, I feel honored and privileged to be able to come up in front of you and speak to you about disaster preparedness in the community context because I've become quite the passionate advocate for it. Quite, quite by circumstance, I was a 9-1-1 dispatcher at REDCOM the evening of the fires in 2017. And that changed everything about how I looked at how vulnerable our community was. For years as a dispatcher, I heard emergencies, you know, by the thousands. But to hear the thousands in one night was completely overwhelming. So once I formed Nuestra Comunidad, I started pursuing being out in the community as a full-time venture because I believe that change has to happen. So without further ado, and because I know we have some time restrictions, I'm going to go ahead with the presentation. And at the end, we'll go through some of the project outline and the proposals that I've submitted to each of you. The booklet, I don't know if you want to go through the whole thing or I can highlight and then you get, you know, if you have questions, you can ask them. So the first, there we go. The first point I want to make is that emergency or disaster preparedness is a shared responsibility on all levels. Government, the private, the nonprofit sector and the individuals and citizens. Never was that more outlined than the night of the fires. Individuals and households are the core of our nation's preparedness. A community's ability to respond to or recover from a disaster depends on the level of preparedness that every community member has. It is a whole community approach. We cannot afford to leave out entire segments of populations, whether it's limited English proficiency, community members or disabled or elderly that don't have anybody checking on them or they have mobility problems. They all need to be incorporated into a bigger plan. So in 2009, the Citizen Corps did a national survey and they found that over 60% of those that they surveyed believed that emergency responders or emergency workers would be reaching them or helping them within the first 72 hours following a disaster. The reality of it is that during the first 72 hours after a disaster, resources are focused on the disaster itself and the response to it. Resources are also overloaded by the demand created by the disaster event. And it's also a reality that in a complex disaster, the first responders and emergency workers may not be able to get to everybody. Again, going back to the night of the disasters, I lost count of how many people I had to tell, we are not coming. We do not have anybody to send to you. You need to evacuate. You need to leave. You need to take shelter. You need to jump into your swimming pool. You know, whatever the different directives that were being given that night really kicked into the reality that our system is built to respond to emergencies, not disasters. And even as the systems get augmented and built up, they will never be sufficient. If we face another, I call it a firestorm because what I saw that night wasn't just a fire. The fire was going sideways. I saw it from our center, which was completely surrounded by fire as we answered thousands of calls that night. So right away, I think people need to realize that they're not going to have somebody come for them. And then also, utility providers are not going to be able to restore their power, their sewage, their telephones, their water. There will not be supermarkets that you can go to because they're going to be, they're affected or the food's not going to be edible. You know, those are all things that disaster preparedness helps people prepare for. So community preparedness is essential to getting through that first 72-hour period. So preparedness does not have to be complex. It does not have to be overly consuming. It should empower and motivate and engage the community. And again, this is why taking a whole community approach is essential. We have to get out in the community. We have to give them the resources, but also give them the opportunities to learn more and to be engaged in the process. Now, I don't have to tell most of you what disaster of that magnitude looks like. Whether we lost the fire, our homes or properties to the fire or not, we all witnessed it. We all saw what it did to our community. And not only when it happened, but we're talking in the days, months and now even years after the type of effect that it had on the community. So what do we do now? So now, as Sonoma County starts moving out of recovery and into resiliency, what do we do? Now, that's a question that motivates me quite a bit. How do we push ourselves as a community to that next level? So as individuals, cities and towns and communities, we have to make sure that we are building resiliency to every resident in our community or to as many residents in our community as possible. So with that, let's take a look at the word resiliency. Now FEMA is, FEMA's definition for resilience is the ability of communities to prepare and plan for, absorb, recover from and more successfully adapt to adverse events. More successfully adapt to adverse events. I want you to take a moment and really hold that sentence. What does that mean? How do we adapt with climate change and record-breaking fires with the big one, you know, on the trajectory with all the earthquakes that we've just been experiencing? Sure, it's in Southern California, but that doesn't make us exempt. With all those things, how do we adapt to the changes that we're faced with? And the answer, I- And the answer, I believe, is through preparedness. Preparedness is the way to adapt, bringing our community up to speed. We cannot allow for natural disasters and climate change to outpace the efforts that we make for preparedness. We have to outpace those, the disasters, or else we're not going to be prepared. So in looking at a resiliency, uh, planning cycle, I took a class, uh, for resilience, community, resiliency building. And one of the takeaways for me when I looked at this, uh, particular, um, chart is that we're always going to be in either a planning phase or an implementation phase. At the bottom of the chart, you see where it says response to a hazard, um, which is natural or man-made shock or stress. So if you just put in a picture of our wildfire there, um, that was the starting point. And then, um, during the implementation phase, we moved into recovery, which was critical, trying to get people's properties and, um, um, under control and people back into homes, which has taken for, you know, a really long time. So from that, we move into reviewing and adapting. We have to evolve what we've known. We have to evolve current beliefs and programs, and we have to take them to a level where our community can be resilient. Once we get to a level that we're looking at resiliency, we have to evaluate our people and our systems and our infrastructure, and then we have to plan and adapt, which brings us to preparedness because the level of preparedness that we implement in our communities is going to dictate how we respond to our next hazard, how our community response bounces back and adapts. So, um, so preparedness, disaster preparedness, which has, is largely woven into community preparedness, it is community preparedness, uh, is essential for us to have a better outcome the next time. So if we look at preparedness, here's the levels of preparedness. The biggest foundational part of that is going to be you and your family or the individual in the family. So you have to get the individual, the households ready before you can even start talking about neighborhood, uh, programs, which are very, um, essential also to an overall strategy. Uh, but you have to get the individuals. You can't organize a neighborhood or a community if the, if the individual members are not prepared themselves. Because when that, when that emergency hits and it's the middle of the night and you're running out your door and you're hoping your neighbors are going to follow the plan you came up with, if you're not prepared and nobody comes to help you, if the EMS system is responding to the, to the, to the disaster and your neighbors are dealing with their own situation, guess what? It's on you and it's on you to protect yourself and your family. It's on you to practice those exit routes. I totally understand what you're saying. How do we do a community-wide evacuation drill? Well, it's nearly impossible. Washington hasn't managed to do it. There's a case study that I learned about in April. We self-funded for me to go to a disaster preparedness, um, conference in, uh, Linwood, which is, uh, near Seattle. And, um, some of the, some of the areas there deal with specific disasters. One of the communities, um, is near a volcano. So they have made evacuation route practice a form of living in that place, and they offered to us a, a case study of it. But in, in essence, it grew out, it started with schools, it started with community, with neighborhoods, and then they brought it community-wide because they're, um, from what I understand, it's very rural, the roads are narrow, and so they needed to figure out and practice, how do we get our community members out of here? So that was a focus and it took years. It wasn't that overnight thing. None of this is. So resiliency and preparedness is a strategy. It's a starting block and it has to be something that is, uh, looked at in a, in a wide lens and for a long time. Um, are there things we can do, uh, immediately to make things better? I believe so. And I believe that the, um, pilot program, um, that I, that I strategically designed gives a framework to, uh, it's a three-minute, three, I'm sorry, a three-month window of framework that we, we can knock out some, make some real holes, I think. Um, and we'll go a little bit more specifically into that. So besides equipping our individuals with disaster preparedness, which includes the knowledge of a working emergency preparedness, uh, communication plan with your family, it includes building your own kit so that you have food if you can't have access to it. It includes making sure that you are signed up to all your alerts and knowing what you're looking for in that. And it also includes, um, the greater picture of being involved with, with your neighborhood. Once you're prepared, it's being, um, engaged. So whether you want to go further and learn, take a CERTS program, you want to learn CPR, you want to organize your neighborhood, tho- those are all steps to preparedness. So why, uh, why are, uh, neighborhood disaster preparedness groups so beneficial? There are many reasons for that. Um, neighborhoods that are prepared for emergencies and disaster situations save lives. Uh, they reduce the severity of injury and trauma, and they reduce property damage. In addition to that, contributing as an individual and working together as a team helps build stronger communities, and it improves the quality of life in a community. So neighborhood groups are about emergency disaster preparedness, but they're also about building community because you're not going to care about the neighbor across the street if you don't know them. And if an emergency strikes and you have no relationship with that person, you might be a little bit less prone to go over there and, you know, try to help them if the situation's a little bit dangerous. If you have a relationship, there's more of, uh, there's more invested there and it produces a, a longer effect, um, in the, in the plans. And then those neighborhoods stay active. There's no, there, it does nobody any good to get an, an neighborhood program up and running, which takes a considerable amount of time to get up and running and then have it die in the first six months because people are not engaged. So you have to engage them. So, um, another, another good aspect of having a, an emergency, uh, neighborhood group is that who better to know, um, the unique needs of your neighborhood? Who better to understand if there's geographic issues or maybe language or cultural issues? Do we have, uh, community members that are disabled in our neighborhood? Who would know that better than, but, but the people that live in that neighborhood day in and day out? You know, we see the kids that go off to school and come home when we know no parents are there. So if a disaster hits during that time, are those kids equipped to be alone? We need to know that. So, um, so, uh, neighborhood groups are very, um, essential, an essential part. So this whole, uh, the, the whole pilot program was strategic, strategically designed, um, against what they call a whole community approach. It's, I took a course through FEMA. I'm an online learner of theirs, and, um, the community, the whole community approach very much speaks to what I've already mentioned. You know, making sure you're, you're covering all your demographics as well as you can, making sure that, uh, that you are preparing your, um, you know, disabled members, your older neigh, uh, members, that if there's schools in your neighborhood, that they're also taken into account. So literally looking at the whole community. So, um, in each of the packets that I handed out, the beginning, there are two, there's a, uh, there's a set of, uh, papers that's, uh, that outlines the program. Uh, the pilot program is designed to run for three months because it is a pilot. So first thing I guess, I think it's good to understand that this isn't an all-encompassing, you know, uh, program that goes on and on. This is a three-month window of what prepared, uh, a preparedness campaign can look like. So the city of Cloverdale, uh, disaster preparedness project is a joint effort, uh, between the city of Cloverdale, Sonoma County's District Four, and our nonprofit organization, NC or Nuestra Comunidad. Um, with the project goal of building community-wide disaster preparedness and resiliency within the city of Cloverdale, the disaster preparedness, uh, project is comprised of two distinct initiatives. One, delivering a series of community-wide presentations on disaster preparedness, and two, implementing the Community Fest Disaster Preparedness Program for Cloverdale's neighborhoods. And those two, making those two, um, areas a focus all came from that preparedness, um, um, model that we saw where the individual and then the neighborhoods are the two biggest cores, uh, most important cores to preparedness. So if we move on for this, uh, to make it easy, easier visually, um, there's a separate sheet that, where I put the, a rundown or, I'm a visuals person, and so I wanted to do some kind of chart or, or, um, easy way to look at the different components. Um, you have A or B. So they all, I believe, would carry out, um, the, our, our mission of bringing preparedness and community out nicely. I think that they all cover the same types of points. Uh, Proposal B, uh, adds and, um, uh, adds additional presentations that we would do community-wide. It also adds additional neighborhoods. And I would like to, on a side note, explain a little bit about neighborhood programs. Uh, neighborhood programs, there is a gamut of them out there. So there is, you know, um, the Neighborhood Fest, which is kind of what we would base ours off, off of, I believe that, uh, city manager Kelly and, uh, and mayor, uh, Bagby were interested. They had spoken with the gentleman that, that founded that, that concept, and it's a, it's a good concept. And really the takeaway from neighborhood programs is that they're all effective as long as they're being implemented. So whichever one you like best is, it's all good. They all work the same way. And you can even take components from one program and add components of another program if you like that. There's no set rules as to how or, uh, how they work or, or any of that. But one thing that is common across all of them is that you have to give ownership to the neighborhoods. So, um, so with this, these proposals, I would come in, build, uh, the framework for the programs, build toolkits that we would give neighborhood leaders. We would depend on people stepping up from the neighborhoods that want to, that want to be the head of, of their neighborhood programs, and they want to organize it and they want to lift it off the ground. So I would support all their efforts. I would give them all the material they need. I would coordinate with, um, with other agencies. You know, our local agencies here, fire, police, EMS, um, Red Cross, if, if we chose to bring them in, um, you know, all of that, I would do all of that work. Uh, but again, we give the ownership to the neighborhood itself. So what each of their Community Fest would look like really would be up to that neighborhood. So the, the, um, the overall picture with the, these is that they organize a big, almost like a party or a block party, um, and they, that brings all their neighbors out. And the, and then the hopes of that is that by making it more of a social event initially, it engages people. When one, as soon as you say disaster preparedness, a lot of people tune out. You know, a lot of people have already forgot what we went through, or a lot of people will never engage. And so I think by making it a social event and then ta-da, they come out to have a potluck with their neighbors, and we have resources out there for them. So we have people out there giving them all the, all the information on, on how to prepare their homes. Uh, we have, uh, you know, maybe a, a certain amount of things that we give them to put in their emergency preparedness kits. You know, we can supply a lot of the things, and then we can design a mapping program because, uh, one of the big functions of neighborhood programs is people knowing who's in their neighborhood. And then also starting to look at evacuation routes, you know? So we provide them with that, with an opportunity to see who lives where, people can, you know? And this is all on a people opting-in option. If somebody doesn't want to participate and they don't want to give any information, they don't have to. But for those that want to be part of the plan, they could share things like, you know, during the day, we all work and my mother stays home by herself and she's disabled, or maybe she moves around really slowly. You know, I would really like to make sure people know she's there and somebody's checking on her. So it would be up to people what they share, or my kids are home for this amount of time. But anyway, it's effective when people get engaged. It's effective when you give them ownership. And then in the, in the three-month, uh, model, we would do a certain amount of those just to get them launched. The framework would be there and that would all belong to you guys. So beyond the three, um, the three-month, uh, model, if it was to be continued, you would have the structure in place and you could continue the program either, um, you know, implementing it yourself at that point or continuing, um, you know, whether it's a relationship with us or somebody else to continue the program. But I believe it's a good model. So the model consists of, um, a number of presentations, um, for the community, and we would maybe do one in a church, maybe one in a, I believe we have some family housing type of situations here in, um, Cloverdale. And then we would have a couple that are open to whoever, so we would set up the dates, announce the venue, and then welcome people in. The presentations last about an hour, hour and a half because, uh, what I like to do is give them a whole plan that they can take home and implement, and it would make them preparedness. And it even includes a section that talks about during a disaster, these are the situations where you would call nine-one-one, and here's the situations where you would call two-one-one. You know, and then now, um, I also am working with, uh, PG&E, uh, because they need to get the word out about the emergency, uh, power shut-offs. You know, whether you agree with it or not, it's happening, and also people need to realize certain aspects of it. The power goes out, it might be out for five days. So, you know, you have to plan for that. And so all of these different elements are incorporated. So when, when your, your community members walk out of one of these presentations, it, they literally hear all the different things that are going to be important in case of a disaster. So we have a certain number of those activities to engage the individuals, and then we have the Neighborhood Fest, but we also throw in some social media, you know, both with information and promotion of the, of the pilot program, um, to get people to come to the different presentations and also to the events. And then we do have some community-wide events. So in November, I'm sorry, at the North County Fire Summit, it's on September twenty-ninth. That's a really good opportunity to pull in the whole community in one big event where, where disaster preparedness is a focus. And then, um, also there is the opportunity for in October, in, uh, Proposal B, um, in October, on October seventeenth, there's a nationwide movement called the Great Shakeout. So us, we would belong to the Great California Shakeout. So they coordinate a time with literally communities across the whole state would conduct, uh, an earthquake preparedness drill community-wide. So I would coordinate with the schools. So at the same exact time that, that we mentioned, schools would have a drill, we would have, we would hold an event somewhere here locally, invite the community in. Uh, I, we talk about earthquake, earthquake safety, and at that same exact time, guess what? Everybody in that presentation is going to have a fire drill as well. It brings an awareness to earthquake, um, you know, safety and what to do during an earthquake. It also, um, I have a, you know, there's a whole kit that comes with it, so there's a film and it talks about the history of earthquakes. So it's a really good event, uh, preparedness, uh, potential as well. So those are the, the community-wide events. So everybody loves data, right? Or at least my husband does. He's a financial analyst, so, um, he loves to make, you know, pretty charts and spreadsheets. But what is important with data in this situation, um, is that we need to know who are we reaching? You know, we need to know, um, the segments of the population, but also we need to know what, where are the holes, what else needs to be done? And so during, during the, um, the course of this pilot program, we would be collecting data that we would, that you would have for your use. So, uh, Plan A gives you, you know, your basic number of participants, primary languages of the presentations, locations, basic demographics, wherever that's practical. Um, in Proposal B, uh, we would do a more comprehensive, uh, approach and report, um, that includes interpretation analysis and also a collection of data. And we would also, uh, give you a plan that going forward, if you wanted to pursue the neighborhood programs, you know, we would give you all that information. Who are the people that stepped up during the presentations? I'm going to be asking people if they're interested to become, you know, uh, neighborhood, uh, captains for these Neighborhood Fest, and we would be able to give you all that. So going forth, if you're going to continue with more, you would have who signed up, who's already interested, who are our leaders in the community that want to do this? So all that information would be gathered and given to you in a report that would kind of, that would sum up the work that would be done during that period. So, um, again, for the, in the interest of time, I know that we have both, both exceeded our ten-minute quota, but, um, I will go ahead and open it to questions. Um, if there's any specifics, I know that there's a lot to look at and perhaps, you know, we can, uh, we can tackle questions at a different time. I'd be happy to meet again and go over anything else, questions or concerns.
Thank you. First, I'm going to check and see if there are any immediate questions from council members, then I'll open it up to the public. So anything, anything for Alma?
No.
Yeah? Okay. Well, then, stick close, and at this time, I'll open it up for, um, anyone, for the public to come forward, and you can ask questions of Supervisor Gore or of Alma. And do remember to state your name for And do remember to state your name for the record.
Shirley Davis. Good evening, Mayor Bagby, council members and staff. Two things that I'd like to focus on. Number one, I did volunteer work with 211 during the 2017 fires. And yes, we had a plethora of information available to us, all the different agencies connected with us, and we were on top of all the recent information, and we took thousands of calls. However, three months ago, Bautasio Torres, he quit, and the 211 program here in Sonoma County went belly up, and it was under the Volunteer Center. So now what happens if you call 211, you're going to go to San Diego. So I'm hoping maybe, yeah, we could do something about getting it back to our local community. The second thing I want to focus on is, we're talking about evacuations and being ready and all that. I was wondering about sirens. I think item number four, you mentioned you're going to test sirens. Can we have a couple here? Mr. Baltasar, Captain Baltasar from Cal Fire in Sacramento suggested we have two. And I presented it to the city council, and I'd like to know if we can have that, because it's obviously an early alert. And I think, you know, up and down our coast, Alaska, Hawaii, tsunami warnings, we have in Wisconsin, the sirens for severe thunderstorms. Midwest, we have sirens for tornadoes. So people learn that when that thing goes off, we need to do something. Your evacuation program, right?
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Two quick things. One is that the 211 system, it was housed within the Volunteer Center. It's currently set, we approved budget, about $300,000 at our Board of Supervisors. It's moving over to the United Way of the Wine Country. So, and it actually has a lot more funding, and it's more robust. The 211 system, the issue was not that it was there, it's that people weren't utilizing it, quite honestly. The county is what I mean. It's like, you know, there wasn't integration between how much was there and what was available. The Volunteer Center, I think, was a great place for it, but with the changes that happened, it looks like there's going to be an enhanced investment, and it will be housed at the United Way of the Wine Country. The second thing is with respect to sirens, we have a grant in that we're anticipating getting funded for about $2 million for a variety of sirens throughout Sonoma County. The goal is to identify strategic locations through our emergency management office. Those would primarily be focused on tsunami warnings on the coast, under areas like the dam at Lake Sonoma and some high-fire-prone areas. But I think through that county grant, which we have to pay a quarter of, and FEMA pays 75%, as a part of this campaign that we're talking about, we could also identify if there's a need or desire. The only other thing I'll say is that our sheriff and a lot of them in Northern California have changed their system, where they now have the high-low sirens. So their focus is running the evacuation presentations, or excuse me, drills in unincorporated and then potentially, if we want to, incorporated areas, that it tests those high-low sirens out, like you here in kind of Europe. So the mobile sirens is always a great opportunity, too. We got a presentation from Oakland that has a variety of sirens up in their neighborhoods and how they do. And the first thing they said is that, I mean, you have to train people on what it is, how they work, what it means. So there's a lot in the works, and I think it could be an investigation as a part of it. So great point. Thank you. Thank you for your work.
Anyone else from the public like to come forward and ask a question or make a comment on both of the presentations? All right. All right, well, seeing none, I'm going to bring it back to the council. Take a look back and see, what is staff looking for as far as direction from the council this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to extend my gratitude to Supervisor Gore for his presentation on resiliency and the efforts that the counties make tonight, followed by the presentation with Alma Bowen and the program that she presented with Nafstar Comandadad. What she has provided for us is two proposals, Proposal A and Proposal B. Proposal A is a $10,000 planning effort to engage in community preparedness. Proposal B is basically an add-on to Proposal A, which includes additional community outreach and community-wide events and additional data with a cost of $17,000. With your support, council, we would bring back a budget amendment to undertake this community preparedness work. If you support, you know, one of the particular options, was to give us guidance on that, we could move forward. It is within staff's, city manager's budget authorization, I mean, signature authorization, but we would need your support for a budget amendment to fund the proposed work. We do think there is tremendous benefits associated with the scope of work that Ms. Bowen has put together, and if I understand correctly, Supervisor Gore has offered to contribute, you know, up to $5,000 in funding that's available through his guidance as a Board of Supervisor. So therefore, if you did propose to move forward with Proposal A, that would cover about roughly half the cost. Obviously, Proposal B would be a little bit more of a contribution from our general fund to support the enhanced community outreach.
And just to be clear, so Proposal A is the baseline, and that's $10,000, and then I'm finding, I see 17 for Proposal B, so is it, sorry, is it $10,000 and an additional seven? Or an additional 17? That's what I, it's not.
I believe it's an additional seven.
An additional seven. Okay, thank you. Great.
Yes, Proposal A is a total of $10,000, and then Proposal B is $17,000.
Yeah.
One of the biggest contributors to the change in the pricing is that for A, all the printing, because this is going to be a really heavy creation of materials for outreach, because we're talking all the educational material, the posters, the flyers, everything that goes attached to it, not only for the disaster preparedness presentations, but also then when we move into the neighborhood organizing, creating the toolkits that everybody would need, that basically is the plan, how does the Neighborhood Fest operate and all of the logistical things, things like, you know, if they're going to close a street, if they want to have a block party, how do they coordinate with the town itself to accomplish that? All of that would be included. But in Proposal B, I'm absorbing all those fees, meaning we're not going to go back to you and ask you to pay for all the printing. We're going to put that cost. So that way, it streamlines me having to go back and forth and say, okay, you know, I'm getting this, and I'm going to give you a bill now for this much more, you know, because I cannot, I can't, I cannot carry out Proposal A and absorb the printing costs. It just would not work that way.
Makes sense. Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
If I may, just a council member, from my perspect, like, what I was trying to do when I talked with Alma and talked with a few of your council members, too, was, I'm with the county, but I don't want to wait for the county. So that was kind of my offer, is throw in some of our, you know, I have limited discretionary dollars, but throw it on the table. There's not another community that's doing this, so we'd be the first. I say that because other people are doing kind of ad hoc, I would say, efforts. I have talked with, I've asked Alma to meet with the city council, like, members from Windsor, and then we're also looking with a group, Corazon, in Hillsburg, about doing either that with them or as well, so trying to deploy this into multiple areas. But it was just kind of a nexus that we had had a conversation with some of your folks who said, you know, and the city manager, we're thinking about doing something. So I said, hey, let's, I mean, this is cheap as hell for the return on investment, but, you know, if I need to put up more money, you guys let me know, too.
Well, don't offer that.
You need to put up more money.
Absolutely.
If I may, Madam Mayor, thank you. First and foremost, I genuinely understand where the feeling of being impressed comes from. I felt like you really captivated your audience. One of the reasons why I want to compel my, or I want to communicate to my colleagues that I support this concept, and I'd be fine with really looking at if our budget will allow us to do 17,000, and if there are any difficulties, hell, we might hit James Gore up for a little bit more money out of that. But I really feel that you are an approachable individual, and this type of community outreach, you're going to give your presentation, and then the litany of questions is really where I feel the value added will come from as well. And I believe the way that you conduct yourself and your approachability is what really leans me to just, I want to move forward with this. So with that being said, thank you, and thank you very much for this presentation this evening.
Thank you for the kind words, and it's just a project I fully believe in. Thank you.
And to clarify, thank you, I'd like to see us come back with options, or come back with what the impact would be to move forward with Proposal B.
I really understand quite how big of a deal printing can be and how costly it can be. I'm good with B.
Yes, thank you, Supervisor Gore and Alma. I definitely appreciate the fact that this is a program that is definitely going to address a big portion, a big percentage of our community, the Spanish-speaking community and other limited English proficient individuals. I believe that we will be a great example in Sonoma County by being the first group to do it. We have the correct size of individuals and communities to be able to really come forth with a very positive example for the county and for the state. I believe that Proposal B is most useful, given the fact that there will be data that could be used at long term, and it's really a good deal for the price. And I have committed myself, as a council member and as a member of the Latino community in Cloverdale, to work with Alma and with Supervisor Gore, as well as everybody else, police department, fire, et cetera, to make sure that the information is there, to make sure that is thorough, to make sure that is available at all times. So thank you very much, and I definitely support this project.
Yeah, I have to say, I was lucky enough to be at the initial meeting with Alma and Councilmember Cruz and our city manager, and I was impressed with her professionalism and experience and the compassion that she brings. Just listening to her talk about how, you know, we have to act now to help prepare people, reminded me of, just a couple of weeks ago, I was down in Southern California at a League of Cities conference, and one of the sessions was on community resilience, and it was given by Sean McGlynn, who's the city manager of Santa Rosa, and also the current city manager of the city of Malibu, who I actually met before their fires last year, and I consider her to be a friend. And it was pretty rough getting through that presentation of what happened in Santa Rosa, and then followed by what happened in Malibu, which is where Jeff and I went to college. And she was describing a situation in Malibu, which was very, which we can relate to in Sonoma County, and that is that we were, like, as Alma said, we were prepared for emergencies, we're not prepared for disasters. By the time Malibu called up for mutual aid and help, there was none. And we have to be prepared for that, because we were actually in that situation in 2017 in Cloverdale. We were very fortunate that we could see the fires, but they did not come into town, and it was probably more luck than anything. We can't, we have to take this opportunity to make sure that people are prepared, because it may come to a point yet again that people in Cloverdale, we're on our own. We're going to have to be able to take care of ourselves, take care of our neighbors, and get ourselves the heck out of here. And we need to talk evacuation routes as well, James, because during the 2017 fires, we couldn't go north and we couldn't go south during, you know, during small windows of time, or it was not practical, because the danger was imminent both north and south of us. So we need to be prepared to take care of ourselves here. So I strongly suggest that support going with Proposal B. And the other thing that, point that it leads me to is that if we are going to be tracking neighborhood leaders, we also have to have a constituent database, because as Alma said, she'll be able to do the reporting and give us a file at the end of people who are interested in being block captains and being community leaders. We have to have a way to trace those resources at City Hall, and currently, I don't think an Outlook database is going to cut it. So we also, in addition to this, need to look at making sure that we have the technology tools to manage the data and be able to use it, and also be able to continue contact with people, you know, over time, because people do move on, people, you know, things change, and we'll need, this is something that we'll need to figure out what the appropriate timeframe is, so we'll, you know, do the initial rollout. Maybe it's, you know, five years, maybe it's six years, something like that, but we'll need a way to follow up with folks and stay in contact with them, and we don't have that at City Hall right now, so. So I don't, you have direction, we don't need to vote on this tonight, correct?
Mayor, you do not need to vote on this item tonight. You've given clear direction to staff. We will plan to bring, work closely with Alma and Supervisor Gore, bring back a budget adjustment, and we'll work on an agreement through the city attorney's office to initiate this effort as soon as we can to, you know, get started, because time is of the essence. And so we'll work quickly to get an agreement in place with the necessary budgetary resources to support this important emergency preparedness effort.
Great, thank you. All right. Thanks for the presentation, and at this time, I think we're going to take a little break. Yes, I'm seeing the need. So just a five-minute recess, thank you. We are going to reconvene and take our meeting back up at Communications. Seeing none, unless that's not true. Looks true. No, any communications, Mr. City Manager? All right.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I did send some copies of letters regarding fireworks, that communication.
Well, they did end up in the police.
Finance admin and police subcommittee.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure.
Today.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll give a report out on that later. Any questions? Sorry.
Are we still talking about communications?
Yes.
So I don't know if, it will make it into the minutes, but we received, I think it's, we're up to five correspondents today regarding support for a dock park.
Great. Oh, yeah. Thank you. And let's make sure that gets into the record.
Absolutely.
Okay.
They've been afforded to the appropriate parties. David has it, and he's since sent it to Maria. We'll get it into the minutes.
Okay, great, thank you. So we're going to move on to public hearings, and item 13, public hearing to consider protests to the notice to remove weeds.
Chair, or Mayor, council members, this is a quick one. This is a follow-up to your June 12 resolution declaring certain properties in town a nuisance due to overgrown weeds. After the resolution was adopted, we sent out the letters. Happy to report that all the property owners complied with our request to cut the weeds, so there are no further actions required by the council.
That is.
Thank you.
Excellent. So we need to take, do we need to vote on not doing anything, or we can just move right on to the next item? That's wonderful news. I am, under new business 14, consider a resolution approving an individual at-will employment agreement with Jason Ferguson.
Mayor, council, I'm very delighted to be able to bring this item forward for the council's consideration tonight. As many of you know, our former chief, Stephen Kramer, retired after a very long, dedicated career in December 1st last year. Since that time, interim chief, Bob Stewart, has served as our police chief, and I want to acknowledge the considerable contributions he's made to the department during his interim service, all the while trying to rebuild his home that was impacted by the catastrophic wildfires in 2017. So I do want to acknowledge the leadership that Chief Stewart has provided in this interim period, and he's been tremendously helpful in the recruiting process for our next chief, which I'm delighted to introduce tonight, after a very pretty extensive recruitment process and interview process that included a professional panel as well as a community panel, and last but not least, a meeting with the police department, the unanimous candidate for the next police chief for the city of Cloverdale. city of Cloverdale was Jason Ferguson. Let me tell you a little bit about Jason. Jason, maybe you can just wave to the council and come on down. Jason brings with him over 24 years of experience in the law enforcement profession. He began his career with the Lake County Sheriff's Department as a correctional officer back in January of 1996. And while working in his position, he really was able to gain an important understanding of the criminal justice system, and kind of get an understanding of what it means to be a patrol officer and ride along and really engage in, with the public. Since that time, he was sponsored by the city of Lakeport to attend the police academy, from which he graduated in 1999. And in this capacity with the city of Lakeport, he was able to take on a number of special assignments that I think will be of particular value here with the city of Cloverdale, including serving as a field training officer, a reserve coordinator, school resource officer, which we know is very important for Cloverdale, as well as a narcotic task force agent. Moving forward, in August 27, 2007, Jason was promoted to the rank of sergeant. In that capacity, he, his duties ranged from training to background investigations, and he shared with me that one of his proudest accomplishments during his time was, you know, attending and graduating from the Supervisor and Leadership Institute after completing an eight-month-long intensive development course. And then, come 2012, he was promoted to the rank of lieutenant, where his duties included, amongst other things, grants management, budgets, which is always very important, hiring, and on multiple occasions, being able to serve as a capacity as the acting police chief while the current police chief was out. He's completed some important certifications under post, which includes the advanced supervisory and managerial certificate. And while, all the while working as a police lieutenant, he learned his bachelor's of science degree in criminal justice management, and I know how hard it is to work full-time and go to school. On a personal note, Jason has four daughters. That sounds like that might be tougher than being a police officer, and one of which who has recently married and is planning to attend trade school herself in Arizona. And his youngest daughters are still active in school and are active participants in sports. Jason has shared with me that he also enjoys the great outdoors, hiking, backpacking, camping, wakeboarding, snowboarding. I think he's shared with me that he rides a motorcycle, which we may have to insert a clause in his employment agreement that isn't allowed.
It's for sale.
He did acknowledge that he climbed the summit of Mount Shasta, which is, I don't know the exact elevation, I know it's about 13,000, 13,000, so that's a pretty good hike, at least three times. And, you know, with that said, I, during the interview process, one of the things that impressed me was, you know, his management and leadership skills that he exhibited through the interview process. And I, you know, particularly liked the fact that, you know, he's the kind of officer that wants to roll up his sleeves and work right alongside his officers. He expressed a desire to don the uniform, not sit behind the desk, be out there with patrol officers, you know, actively working with the community, and I think he's really the right person to be our next police chief. What we have in your packet tonight is an employment agreement, and it sets forth the terms and conditions for his employment with the city of Cloverdale. We worked closely with Mr. Ferguson on that agreement, and I know Jose coordinated that very closely. And at this time, I just wanted to maybe have our city attorney walk you through those terms and conditions, and hopefully, at the end, your recommendation would be our staff's recommendation, city manager's recommendation, is to adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the at-will agreement with Mr. Jason, so he can be our next police chief.
And Mayor, members of the council, just quickly to review the employment agreements, and the staff report does do a good job of just laying out some of the key terms. The commencement date, I believe it was August 5th, so I know that that's going to get filled in. I know it says July 25th. David was very eager to get him in and start it. Salary, it's $137,970.10, and that's step three of the salary schedule that the council just approved today. We've moved from just having the set salary from the agreement to an actual scale, and that was approved earlier tonight. Severance, the typical three-month base salary, which is what most of the department heads get. There's vacation leave, sick leave, and administrative leave as well in the agreement, and other allowances. And I know that just going and dealing with the negotiations of the agreement, I definitely appreciated Mr. Ferguson's professionalism, and through all, through the negotiation, very eager to get started. I will tell you, the resolution does point out some other legal provisions under the municipal code. The question that always comes up is, wait, isn't the employment of the, of the city, of the police chief, the city manager's decision? It is, under the municipal code, it is the city manager's choice, however, the employment agreement and the actual employment of the salary and benefits, that's something that needs to be approved by the council. And I know that the system that the city has set up is that the employment agreement comes before the council for approval and ratification of the city manager's selection.
Thank you. All right, any questions from the council this time before I open it up to the public?
No technical questions for me.
No, thank you, Madam. Okay, so at this time, I invite the public to come forward if there are any comments. All right, seeing none. Bring it back to the council, do you have any questions for?
I have a lot, but not about this agreement tonight. I look forward to a one-on-one with you. I look forward to discussing your points of view, especially on the items that we've heard about your boots-on-the-ground approach. I'd like to take a minute to comment one of your officers who utilizes their business card at times, leaving it on a windshield when they might have a question or a comment. I really like that approach of being communicative with the public, and it's, discipline is the word I'm coming up with off the top of my head, has its place, but I feel, I feel communication is the forefront of how to be successful. That's just my personal opinion. So with that being said, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
So, let's find out if any of the other council members have any questions or comments first, but I will welcome that motion when it's time. Any comments or questions?
No, just to say welcome and look forward to continued communication, thank you.
No, I would also like to say welcome onboard, but I'd also like to thank Chief Stewart for all the help he's given us in so many areas, and also Sergeant Parker, who's carried a lot of the weight. Thank you so much, and I'm sure you're needed, and now Chief Stewart can actually take a little retirement.
Enjoy retirement.
That's going to make him very happy.
Please come back, please come back and visit.
And I am looking forward to a little one-on-one meeting, too.
Likewise.
I know where most of the bodies are buried in town, so I'd like to know.
Jason, did you have anything for us?
Yeah, if I may take just a very brief minute. I would like to first of all thank each and every one of you here for allowing me the opportunity to be the next chief of police of Cloverdale. I've spent quite a bit of time here in the community, eaten at the establishments here, I've been to the Friday Night Live, that was wonderful, by the way, and I've been able to talk to people, and everybody I talked to had nothing but great things to say about this community. Additionally, when it became known that I was leaving the city of Lakeport after 21 years, a lot of community members, members reached out to me and really had a lot to say positive about this community also, and how lucky I was to be coming to this community. I could not agree with them more, and I thank you for the opportunity to lead this organization into the future.
Great, thank you. I'll just conclude that by saying welcome and enjoy your vacation before you dive in next month. And also, I just really want to thank Chief, now that, so do you have a house again?
It's getting close.
It's getting close.
Actually, the painters are there this week, the cabinets go in next week.
Wow.
Carpet's the week after, tile, so end of August is kind of what they're looking at, but I think it's probably going to be like the first week of September.
Now you'll have time to enjoy it, right?
Right around the corner.
And please don't be a stranger, too. Thanks for all your help, and of course, thank you to Sergeant Parker, and welcome. We look forward to getting to know you, and-
Thank you.
If I may, Mayor, I just wanted to congratulate Jason for this position. One thing that I, when I came here, I was really kind of tasked with finding a new police chief, and one who would fit into the organization, that the organization would feel like there's a connection. And through the interview processes, the POA, the employees all had the opportunity to sit down with Jason, not in a real formal setting, but across the table. Since then, he's been in the department several times, talking to people, but his personality and the way he conducts business is going to be wonderful for this community, something they've needed for a long time, and I'm really excited to see what happens down the road, so.
Thank you, Chief.
And you do have a good staff here, so.
Yes, I certainly do. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, with that, if someone would like to make a motion?
Well, I just wanted to say thank you for reminding me that I'm not the only one who is allowed to speak. I do appreciate that.
It's my job. So, go ahead.
All right, fine. I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 56-2019, Resolution of the City Council of the city of Cloverdale approving an at-will employment agreement with Jason Ferguson as Cloverdale Police Chief, and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city.
I second.
Oh, Marta, yeah, Councilmember Cruz.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Brigham?
Yep.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
And Mayor Bagby?
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
We are moving on to Item 15, a related topic, and who would like to take that? That's a consideration of Resolution authorizing staffing reorganization at the police department.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Before you this evening is a recommendation to reorganize the rank structure of the police department by establishing a lieutenant position in order to support effective management and leadership practices. Currently, the department's structure of sworn personnel consists of a police chief, two sergeants, and 10 police officers. The supervisory structure of utilizing sergeants is ineffective for a variety of reasons. Most importantly, there is a clear need to have departmental second-in-command, who is responsible for carrying out the direction of the chief of police, through the chief of police, through the chain of command. Having a structure where sergeants act not only as first-line supervisors but assume managerial roles creates inefficiencies, confusion, and potential conflicts, especially when investigating administering disciplinary action. The proposed lieutenant position would place a higher emphasis on administrative functions, and oversight of the police department, including state and federal compliance, major investigation management, incident command responsibilities, personal matters such as hiring, training, post-compliance, policy development and accountability, as well as development and implementation of community-oriented policing programs. While a higher level of administrative responsibility comes with this position, the lieutenant will still be responsible for responding to calls for service and supervising his subordinates. Moreover, the lieutenant would assume operational control in the absence of the chief of police. Included in my staff report is reference to a survey of similar-sized police departments in relation to their supervisory management structure. Of the Sonoma County City survey, Cloverdale was the only agency without a lieutenant position. We are also the only agency working with just two supervisors, that being the sergeants, covering a 24/7 operation. This in itself could lead to liability claims for failing to supervise. I also consulted the Commission on Peace Officer Standards and Training, as they often provide staffing studies for departments. While the post-representative was unable to conduct a study for Cloverdale, he did advise that in other studies for similar-sized departments, they found an organizational benefit for establishing a management-level position such as a lieutenant. This recommendation also holds true to my experience with two staffing studies while working for the city of Cattati, whereby the lieutenant position was supported. This brings me to the point of recommending the promotion of Sergeant Chris Parker to the position of lieutenant. As staff and council are aware, Sergeant Parker served in this capacity of acting chief of police last year for a considerable amount of time due to the absence of Chief Kramer. In that capacity, Parker undertook the responsibility to interact with council, city staff, lead the department administratively while still serving as first-line supervisor, and even handling calls for service. This was not easily done, but he did so with great skill and a sense of duty. I have also worked with Sergeant Parker, not only in his capacity as a Cloverdale sergeant, but as a Cattati officer and sergeant. He is well-respected by the department and city staff, as well as members of the public. I have total confidence in his, and recommend him for this position. So, I conclude my report.
Thank you. Any questions for, any questions before I open it up to the public? Okay, so at this time, at this time, I'm going to open it up for public comment. I was asking the council if they had any questions before I opened it up. So, would anyone like to come forward and make a comment on this item? All right, seeing none, I'm going to move it, bring it back to the council. Any debate or deliberation?
I would love to offer this resolution.
All right, and just before we go, do you have any comments?
That's how you're supposed to do it.
That's how you're supposed to do it. That's how the grownups do it. So, without further ado.
Okay. City of Cloverdale, City Council Resolution Number 57, 2019, Resolution of the City Council of the city of Cloverdale authorizing a staffing reorganization of the police department by reclassifying one sergeant position to the position of lieutenant, adopting the lieutenant job description and salary compensation, and authorizing the appointment of Sergeant Chris Parker to the position of police lieutenant, and he deserves it very much.
I second.
And may we have a roll call vote soon?
Councilmember Turner?
Lieutenant Parker, yes.
You get everybody upset.
Councilmember Brigham?
Yes.
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor Bagby?
Aye.
So, I would like to say congratulations, Lieutenant Parker.
It's been a long journey for me. Just talking about, Chief talking about what I did, you know, with one sergeant on light duty and me being acting chief with an acting sergeant. Wow, really stressful, just, I put my all into everything. I love law enforcement, I love living here, I love the community, I love working with you guys, the city manager, Kevin, Jose, I love Chief Stewart, Mark, really, I mean, the staff is great. I walk over there and, what do you need, Parker? David Kelly can hear me coming. But I just, you know, everybody's just great. Marta helped me with the Spanish version of National Night Out, which is coming August 6th, everyone's welcome to join us. But, you know, I coached Little League football, I love that, you know, just the kids are great, and I really enjoy it. Thank you for giving me the opportunity just to be a police officer here, to be a lieutenant or a sergeant, to support the chief is just an honor for me. I don't want to talk about myself, really. I'll say a few words about Mr. Ferguson, who I met at a RE/MIF conference, and I knew, I don't know if you guys have been to the Olympic Club, but we were there at the conference, and one of the attorneys, RE/MIF attorney, advised us over to the Olympic Club, which is next door. And this is a nice, I mean, it's a really nice exclusive place, and so I wanted to check it out, so they're giving us a tour, and he stopped me. Hey, Parker, I hear you have a chief's position, so he pulled me to the side, started talking about the chief's position, and I'm going to go on this tour, but, but he was, I mean, he was really engaging, and I knew, as soon as I started talking to him, I mean, this is the guy for Cloverdale. I mean, he really has a great personality, hard charger, and I think he's going to fit in great with the staff, with you guys, especially with David Kelly, and with the other staff. So I, you know, I, we're in good shoes right now, and thanks to Chief Stewart for getting us to this point. I know he has a lot to do with his house, and just, thank you. I'm honored. What else to say?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mayor?
You're not being embarrassed yet.
I really truly want to acknowledge the special effort that then Sergeant Parker, now Lieutenant Parker exhibited in his role as being an acting chief while our previous dedicated chief was out on leave. I know it was, we encountered a lot of struggles and a lot of challenges, but Sergeant Parker was always there. And, you know, under the personnel rules, when you sit in an acting capacity, you get a relatively small increase in your salary. So the amount of time and dedication that he put into that effort was significant in comparison to the additional compensation he received. And all the while, I knew it was because his heart was in representing Cloverdale. And I, you know, it was special thanks for that effort, but also, you know, what you've done to provide guidance for me as a new, as a new city manager and liaise on with the police department has been really particularly valuable. And I just look forward to you in your new position as lieutenant, working closely with our new chief. I think you guys are going to make a great management team, and it's a really opportunity to make our department, police department shine, but also to make our city shine. And it's with great pride that the action that the council has taken tonight to be able to welcome Lieutenant Parker to his new position.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's long overdue, and I just, I just want to say that, you know, your leadership during all times of crisis is so, you're so even. You clearly, you know, all the officers just look up to you so much, and I've never seen you lose your temper. I mean, I'm sure you have, but, you know, yeah, I'm sure you have. No, but I've never seen, you're always, you know, cool under pressure, and you always have a smile for everybody, and it's just really a pleasure to work with you. And I'm, you're just such an asset to the city and such a wonderful representation of our community, and I just want to let you know, we really appreciate you, and I think the two of you, and I had the privilege of serving on Jason's interview panel, and I think the two of you are going to make a really great team, so.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to great things, or at least, you know, things we don't hear about.
I have a few things planned for him.
There you go. Absolutely. Yeah, so thank you very much. Would anyone else like to come forward and haze the new lieutenant? All right, all right. Seeing none, we will move on to the next item. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 16, Compensation Plan for Unaffiliated Employees.
Absolutely. Mayor, council, the item before you tonight, Agenda Item 16 in your packet, is a resolution approving an amended compensation plan for unaffiliated employees. What's before you is an updated compensation plan that was revised, one, to address the changes to the classifications for the accounting analyst to the financing human resource analyst that was previously approved, removal of the deputy city clerk human resource technician position, which was amended to be a city clerk, and the other additional language additions to the amended compensation plan are to address the addition of a lieutenant position that you just approved. That position will be removed from the POA agreement, and so therefore it's necessary to include that position in an appropriate compensation plan. And what staff has done is listed the lieutenant position within the compensation plan for unaffiliated employees. So that's just a brief summary of the changes. There is a redline copy of the compensation plan in your packet, and staff's request tonight is that you, by resolution, approve the amended compensation plan for unaffiliated employees.
Great, thank you. Any questions for staff?
No technical questions, thank you.
Okay, seeing none, I'm going to open this up for a public comment. Would anyone like to come forward and comment on this item? Right? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. We have seen all of these corrections in various forms and gone over them pretty thoroughly previously. Is there any discussion?
No, I think this is a great reflection of David putting together the right team that he needs and having the tools appropriated, so.
Great. If someone would like to offer?
Sure, I'll offer the resolution. City of Cloverdale, City Council Resolution Number 58, 2019, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale approving an amended compensation plan for unaffiliated employees.
Mayor, a second?
I will second.
All right.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Brigham?
Yes.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Bagby?
Aye.
Moving on to item 18, Professional Services Agreement with Woodard and Curran.
Mayor, if we can move back one item to item number 17?
Oh, 17, did I miss that? I did. Authorization to Accept Voluntary Offers of Dedication of Real Property. Apologies. Thank you.
Mayor, I'll jump in and then turn it over to the city engineer. This item is to allow the city manager or the city engineer to accept voluntary dedications of real property for public purposes. Often during the development review process, we require developers to dedicate rights-of-way easements or other improvements. What is intended to, the resolution is intended to provide is a broad authority for the city manager and/or his designee. I think we provided an updated resolution that included city engineer. Often, the city engineer is the appropriate staff to accept dedications of right-of-way, particularly for your public utilities. So we do recommend that you adopt this resolution. This is a kind of a streamlining action so that every time a project comes forward where there's some kind of dedication, we won't necessarily need to come back to council for your approval in order to record that easement, because what this resolution will do is enable us to take those offers of dedication and rights-of-way easements, ultimately that need to get recorded to the clerk recorder. So, I don't know, city engineer, is there any additional kind of clarification or?
Yeah, the reason why I bring this forward is just to make it more efficient, because we get about two or three of these a year, depending on the development, and as the development activity picks up, we're going to be queuing you up with a lot of resolutions. Rather than do that, we'd rather go with a blanket authority and just accept the real property as appropriate for each project.
Great, thank you. Any questions from council? So I'll open it up to the public, if anyone would like to come forward and comment on the item. Seeing no one rushing toward the front, I'm going to bring it back to council, and is there any deliberation?
It's logical.
Would anyone like to offer the resolution?
Sure.
City of Cloverdale, City Council Resolution Number 59, 2019, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale authorizing the city manager or his/her designee to accept voluntary dedications of real property for public purposes on behalf of the City of Cloverdale.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If you wouldn't mind reading the paper copy, because that's the corrected copy.
Can do.
We just got her onto the iPad, Mark. Thanks a lot.
I'm not really liking it.
See? Thanks.
Can't compare stuff side by side.
I'm working on that.
Yeah, well, good luck. Okay. Resolution Number 59, 2019, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale authorizing the city manager, city engineer, or their designee to accept voluntary dedications of real property for public purposes on behalf of the City of Cloverdale. And yes, you're right, that is changed. That is very different.
I will second.
Roll call when you're ready.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Bagby?
Aye.
Now, we're going to move on to number 18, Professional Services Agreement with Woodard and Curran.
Madam Mayor, I bring this forth, during the budget process, we had thought about how we can engage engineering services as a normal practice that we normally do, and rather than come back for each project, I'd like to approach this as a on-call services for ongoing needs, specifically Woodward Curran brings the specialty of environmental engineering necessary for the engineering services needed at the wastewater treatment plant. So this is a continuation of work they've done in the past. However, I'm setting it up such that it is an on-call, so I will be issuing tasks, and there is a financial limit of $50,000 as authorized in the current budget. So again, in the name of efficiency, I'm trying to put engineering services on an on-call basis rather than on a project basis.
I have one question.
Yeah, please.
The $50,000, is that per project cap or is that per year cap?
That's a contractual cap, so if we have enough tasks and it sums up to $50,000, that's the limit. If I have to do a budget?
Per year or per project?
Per year.
Okay.
And so if a project is, you know, a large project is going to exceed the $50,000, obviously I would bring that to the council for special approval for that particular project. But otherwise, this is going to be ongoing task needs, minor things that are not necessarily a giant project.
But if you have three or four different projects?
Yeah, three or four tasks that?
Doesn't have to come back.
Yeah.
Are you trying to streamline government on us or something?
I'm trying.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Yeah.
It's a financial limit, so if it's not spent, it doesn't leave the budget.
So at this time, I'll go ahead and open it up to the public. Would anyone like to come forward, make a comment on how we're spending your money? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Is there further deliberation?
Nope.
Okay, if someone would like to offer?
You got this one?
I'll do this one. Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the City of Cloverdale City Council Resolution Number 60-2019, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale approving a new master professional services agreement with Woodard and Curran, Inc. for NPDES permit and general engineering support for an amount not to exceed $50,000, and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city.
Is there a second?
Sure.
I think Councilmember Brigham beat you to it.
Okay.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Brigham?
Yes.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Bagby?
Aye.
Moving on to item number 19, Professional Services Agreement, PSA, with engineering consultant Coastland Civil Engineering.
Again, this is part of the progress that we're making towards on-call services. This one particularly is for, is this, Woodard Curran? No, this is, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong page here.
This is Coastland.
This is Coastland. So Coastland typically has provided municipal engineering support, but I'm trying to formalize this so that we get on-call services, particularly for project, project related support, engineering support, as opposed to development support where they get, we get reimbursed for their services from a developer. So this is more of direct needs for the engineering department to engage their services for municipal-type work. Again, you know, an extension of staff, essentially, and I'm trying to get this going on on-call services, because there will be many tasks that come up that sometimes they need support from. I could do this with a master agreement, I could do this on a per-task basis. Again, it's just making things more efficient and a cost not to exceed $50,000 for the whole year.
One question. Is this $50,000 for the master PSA, or sorry, forgive me, it says here, the master PSA has an overall budget limit set of $50,000 for fiscal year. Does that mean for the two professional services agreements that we've just spoken about, will it pull from the same pot, or are we talking $100,000 total to be divved up $50,000, $50,000?
Yeah, there's separate line items in the budget, so they are 50 and 50.
Thank you.
I'll open it to the public. Would anyone like to come forward and make a comment or shrewd observation? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for any deliberations. Would someone like to offer the resolution?
Sure. City of Cloverdale, City Council Resolution Number 61, 2019. Boy, we're full of resolutions tonight. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale approving a new master professional services agreement with Coastland Civil Engineering, Inc. for FEMA project support and general engineering support for an amount not to exceed $50,000, and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city.
Is there a second?
I second.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Brigham?
Yep.
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor Bagby?
Aye.
Moving on to item 20, Designation of Voting Delegate and Alternates for the 2019 League of California Cities Annual Business Meeting.
Mayor, council, the purpose of this item is to appoint Cloverdale's voting delegate for the 2019 League Annual Business Meeting. The council can appoint your voting delegate and up to two alternates. It's usually based on who plans on attending the annual conference. I think at this time, the mayor and Councilmember Cruz are planning to attend. The conference will be held in Long Beach on October 16th, 18th, 16th through the 18th. On the Friday, at the end of the conference, there will be a business, annual business meeting where the league votes on various policy matters, and what this action does tonight is enable your voting delegate to vote on behalf of the City of Cloverdale at the League Annual Business Meeting.
No technical questions.
Any questions? Would anyone from the public like to come forward and? All right, well, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. We're both going to be there?
Have at it.
Yeah.
So nobody stepped forward for, well, Jake McKenzie finally?
That's the next item.
Okay.
Yeah, I know. It's almost over, don't worry. Are you planning on staying late Friday? Or are you going to need to go back?
No, no, I'm staying through Saturday.
Okay.
Because I'm also going to have meetings with the Latino caucus.
Okay. I'm in the same boat, too, so. Do you want to vote, or do you want me to vote?
Well, I would serve as alternate.
Do you want to serve as alternate? Okay, well then, is everyone amenable to that?
Great.
All right. Do we have, let's take a vote, practice, shall we? Sue, are you ready?
Is there a motion?
There are a motion? Sorry, thank you.
Where's the resolution?
I know. We're getting lost here.
I'll second it.
We're getting lost in the weeds. It's, we're almost done, folks, come on.
There's no resolution.
There's no resolution.
It's just a motion, yep.
Motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we allow our mayor and Councilmember Marta Cruz to attend the dealie that we were just talking about, the action, the Cloverdale voting delegate, an alternate delegate for the League of California Cities Annual Business Meeting. Have at it.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second it, but it's you and Marta's going to be alternate.
Correct.
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Brigham?
Yep.
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor Bagby?
Aye.
All right, we're in the home stretch, folks. Appointments to the A-Bag. Now you can go.
Me, I could quite honestly care less.
Okay.
But with the Association of Bay Area Government's Executive Board, that's impossible to ever fill. Jake McKenzie stood up and said he'd take it back, so let him have it.
Okay.
I like Jake.
Any other items?
The other one, nobody wants, so.
There you go.
Nobody cared.
Counsel, I would just, if you so desire, give the mayor broad authorization to have a discussion if there is nomination that's at the table to weigh in based on the?
Absolutely.
The conversation.
Oh, yes.
Use your judgment if there's an alternate.
Okay, great. We don't need to vote on this, right?
Nope.
We have instructions to me to, all right, great. Subcommittee items. Airport, our next meeting is October 1st. Finance Administration of Police, our next meeting is July 21st. I'm just going to give a?
24th.
24th, excuse me, 24th at 10:00 a.m.
Madam Mayor, I believe that is a typo, that was yesterday.
Thank you.
Oh, today, isn't it?
No, no, that was today. So our next meeting is, when is it? City manager?
I believe it's August 25th.
I believe you're right, so. Okay, so just a brief, since we said earlier we'd talk about it, so today in the subcommittee, we discussed concerns about firework sales and fireworks shows, posing fire and health risks. We're proposing forming an ad hoc to address these concerns. The ad hoc formation proposal will come before the entire council at the next meeting. That's it. Okay, so?
Pointing to clarification, the next meeting is August 22nd.
August 22nd, okay. Thank you. So Planning and Community Development.
Thank you. Our next meeting will be held on August 20th, 2019, 4:00 p.m., City Hall Conference Room. For Public Works, I do have a few updates from our meeting on Tuesday. I'm happy to report that we are actively working at reducing the spreading costs for rubberized mulch and the replacement project. We also discussed dog parks at length, and you also heard public comment today regarding support of that. I have also received five letters in support of that, which will be attached in a minute. One of the things I'm excited will be coming before the council, before too long, is a memorial dog bowl program for an individual in the community named Kami. It's a good project that we're going to work out the details on and have something to bring before the council as quickly as we can make it happen. Our next meeting will be in, this is also unfortunately a typo, and I believe it's September, ah, what did we say, 4th? Let's see. It's coming here, let's see.
So nothing in August?
No, we skip August, and then we move into September. It is on the, don't let me down. Looks like, yeah, Wednesday, the 4th, at 4:00 p.m. Am I reading that correctly? Someone needs to correct me here in a minute. Yeah, it looks like September 4th. If I do find that I was incorrect, we'll send out a notification.
All right, Joint Fire, Joint City Fire District.
Nothing at this moment.
Okay, and Joint City School District.
I was absent because of illness, but Vice Mayor Walter attended the meeting, and everything is in order.
Great, thank you.
And we do have two student liaison from the high school, very competent individuals.
Oh, great, that's great news.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I found it. The next Public Works Subcommittee will be September the 24th at 4:00 p.m. Thank you.
Great, okay.
You got the four, right?
Yeah, there you go. So council reports. Anyone?
None at this time.
All right, vice president, minor writing, legislative report?
No legislative report, Mayor.
All right, city manager, city attorney report? Nothing? Council direction on future agenda items? Anyone? All right, seeing none, we were going to adjourn to a regular meeting on August 14th. Thanks, everyone, for your patience, and have a lovely evening.